All right, it's ten AM on Tuesday, October the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. All members of the court are here and this meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invitation that has been delivered this morning by Commissioner Cooper, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented by the Honorable County Attorney, Rebecca McQuaid.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and also approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me the liability of two million, seven hundred, one thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. On our cash report summary and general checking account, we have nine hundred, nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents. First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, twenty-one million, forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. And Tex Pool General, three hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred ten dollars and sixty-nine cents for total in cash funds, uh, twenty-two million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Mr. President.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Number five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinnon, County Auditor. Good morning, Mrs. McKinnon.
Good morning. Pre-approved expenditures for September twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth were four hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Pre-approved expenditures for September twenty-ninth through October third were eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Pre-approved expenditures for October the sixth through the eighth were forty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Expenditures for Commission's Court today, October fourteenth, are nine hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. We have one additional bill for the, um, health dental life vision insurance to our tax health benefits pool for three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents. The total expenditures and transfers are two million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Gross payroll for October second was six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars and three cents. Total transfer for the October second, two thousand twenty-five payroll was seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Let me pay the bill, say.
That motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Kirk and all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Number six, consider adoption of resolution thirty dash twenty-five in support of the application for ended defense form of the grant for fiscal year twenty-six, also requested by Mrs. McKinnon. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven is to consider adoption of resolution thirty-one dash twenty-five proclaiming October two thousand twenty-five as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Tuesday, October fourteenth, as Gift of Life's Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day in Hardin County. This is requested by Ms. Norma Sampson, Executive Director of the Gift of Life Program. Good morning, Mrs. Sampson. That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? Ms. Sampson, anything you want to say?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Sure.
Also, I'd like to invite, uh, the Hardin County Health Director, Phil Whitley, and Amber Mary to join me, please. Thank you so much for this opportunity, as always, to share information about Gift of Life and our free healthcare initiatives in southeast Texas and particularly in Hardin County. We've been so blessed and honored to collaborate with the Hardin County Health Department and now been able to extend not only the lifesaving services to more than one thousand and fifty men this summer, but now we're moving on to our women's health program, which I know, as you're aware of, provides free breast healthcare screenings, diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, and biopsies for women who are underinsured. And that has been really an impactful service in Hardin County. So we thank you for allowing us to share this message. We have still many opportunities for these free screenings. Women just need to know about it and with your ambassadorship of serving that message out to the residents and you're so brave about putting it on social media, thank you, Judge, and allowing people to know about our services. Part of this initiative, as the judge just read in the proclamation, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so we're encouraging all women to have early detection, know about the risk and symptoms, take advantage of our programs or reach out to your doctors and know in terms of being able to have preventative screenings. In addition, in a more fun, family-robust way, we're also celebrating the fifteenth annual Julie Richardson Proctor Monster Dash. So it's in downtown Beaumont, but we have people that's, that provide participation throughout southeast Texas, even extending into Louisiana. The nice thing about this is that it's really a celebration of survivorship and hope, encouraging everyone to come out and know about the risk of ovarian and breast cancer and importantly, to be a unified voice in terms of awareness for all southeast Texans. So those that have breast, ovarian, and gynological survivors, they're our guests. They get to come free and they also get to bring their guests with them. This year, we've added a little bit more fun, robust elements. We have a wellness village. This isn't just a fundraiser, it's really about spreading awareness. So now we've got great prizes that we're going to be offering throughout the morning for people to come to our wellness village where they'll be able to learn information as well as their chance to win a prize. We have a Broadway singer that's coming in, Christina Wells, and we'll have a survivor parade and recognize again those that are battling as really fearless warriors against this disease. Then you go on the five, the five K, you can walk, saunter, or run, and we have trick-or-treat stations, kiddie zones, and it's really, again, a wonderful opportunity to come out and unify for the community. So this is the information that we shared with everyone. So please, more importantly, call us if you'd like to find out if you're eligible for our free screenings. And obviously Sharon, Amber, they are part of this team where they can certainly provide the information to anyone that's interested. And not only our screenings, but we'll come out to your business, your church, and do educational presentations. So we recognize that the best really is for all of us to be good stewards of our health. So we have our medical director, Dr. Wendellin Lavalley, and other medical professionals, Sharon and Amber, with us. And we'll share information about how you can be good health advocates and, as we know, take the right steps to a long and healthier life. So thank you for this opportunity, as always, to be able to share our partnership in making a difference in your community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sampson. Thank you, Sharon and Brenda, appreciate y'all very much.
Do you want to say something? Maybe take a photo?
Sure.
Wait, wait, yeah, can we take a picture?
Sure.
Oh, Brenda, what am I saying? I'm sorry, of course, of course.
It's okay, it's okay.
So it's...
I know what you mean.
So, uh, maybe I'll send you...
Erin will get a picture of them, too.
Alright, so we'll hold our little thingy out then. And can we get everybody in the background?
Sure, you want to stand up?
I got you. Look, you can't up your... Hey, one, two, three, one, two, three, boom. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your time.
Yes, ma'am. That was State Representative Janice Holc, took the picture. Thank you, Representative Holc.
Multi-functional. That's right, exactly.
Alright, we all think we voted, all in favor of the motion thirty-one dash twenty-five.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight is to consider approval of request by Mrs. Lisa Walker, Hardin County Crime Victims Assistance Center Director, to accept a donation from Rise and Shine Women's Company, a nonprofit, in the amount of two hundred dollars for Hardin County Crime Victims Assistance Center advocacy. That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Lisa told me that they reached out to her and offered this, and so that's very great and we appreciate them doing so and it would be put to good use.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number nine is to consider request to amend the fiscal year twenty-six general fund budget to accommodate replacement of the air conditioner at the Justice of the Peace Precinct Two office as follows. Moving eight thousand, six hundred thirty dollars from the general contingency line item zero one zero four one eight hundred into zero one zero four five six four fifty, the JP Two building maintenance and repairs line item. That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The juror says he appreciates that, it's hot over there. Get cooled down. Item number ten, consider approving request by the Honorable Rebecca Walton, District Attorney, to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five District Attorney Rule Law Enforcement Grant, SB twenty-two, and the general fund budget. The proposed amendment would allocate unspent funds from the DA's fiscal year twenty-five department budget along with general fund balance amounts representing unused fiscal year twenty-four District Attorney funds to cover fiscal year twenty-four expenses that were considered ineligible for grant funding as follows. Move one thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and five cents from the general fund balance, also eight thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars from the zero one zero four seven six four hundred outside services appeals line item, and excre- uh, increase expenditures in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and five cents by creating a new line item zero one zero seven hundred zero three four, transfer to RLE SB twenty-two dash F zero three four, also create a new line item zero three four three ninety zero one zero, transfers from general fund in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and five cents, and increasing the revenue in that line item, and create another new line item zero three four three 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 two oh one, titled Twenty-four State Payments dash DA, and decrease the revenue by the same amount, ten thousand, one forty-seven oh five. That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Young. Ms. Walton, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, no, other than Ms. Sampson's super impressive and I want to thank Candace for helping you with all of this as well.
Yes, ma'am. Candace, anything you want to add?
No, not unless you have any questions.
No, ma'am, any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Commissioners?
Uh, I'm for this, I'm not against it, but I do have a question. To cover fiscal year twenty twenty-four expenses that were considered ineligible for grant funding, and I see that, uh, that portion was a state payment to the DA. Does, does those unused funds, like this one, not go into the, uh, general?
It rolls in the fund balance. So whatever each department doesn't utilize, uh, rolls into fund balance. And, um, in this particular case, she had some left over funds in, uh, twenty-four and in twenty-five. And we thought also that the state would make some allowances, but they did not in this case. So they consider some of the expenses, uh, unallowable and so now we need to fund that money in order to pay the state back.
Commissioner, are you asking about the grant funds or general funds from the county? Because the grant funds that are unused go back to the state, right?
Right, the grant funds go back to the state, but we're funding it with general fund.
Okay.
So she unspent, underspent those two budget years to cover this, correct?
That's correct.
Right, but the state funds that are unspent, if any, are unspent from any of the RLE grants, the sheriff, or the prosecutors, any of that that's unspent goes back to the state. And we try not to let that happen.
I wouldn't think we would.
No, but it happens, a little bit, not a whole lot.
Well, FY twenty-four was the first year and so we didn't start it at the beginning and so it was kind of, uh, messy here.
Thank you.
Alright, any other discussion? Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number eleven, consider and possibly authorize the Honorable Steve Smith, Tax Assessor Collector, to issue a tax refund as follows. It'll be, uh, six thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and six cents for years two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-three that were paid in error to the Bridget Gilder Insurance Fund, or Insurance Company. That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Number twelve, consider approval of request by the Honorable LW Nudan Cooper, Jr., County Commissioner, to authorize the purchasing agent to sell a two thousand ten F Ford F-one-fifty truck, VIN number ending in two zero zero one, and a two thousand six Ford F-three-fifty truck, VIN number ending in nine seven five seven, with a dump bed, used as a patch truck utilizing Renee Bates Auctioneers Incorporated at ReneeBates.com. Motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of request by the Honorable Amanda Young, County Commissioner, to amend the fiscal year twenty-six budget by transferring one hundred ten thousand dollars from the Rosenbridge Fund Balance to zero one seven six two three 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 four Materials and Supplies, and fifty thousand to zero one seven six two three four eight six Contract Services related to fiscal year twenty-five Encumbered Expenses for overlay of Quail Chase Road and associated materials that could not be completed until fiscal year twenty-six. Commissioner Young, you said you wanted to handle this item?
Yes, sir, um, this was, the contractor was not able to get to it before the end of the budget year, even though we had permission in Commission's Court. So, uh, we transferred the funds from the last budget to this year. However, I would like to amend it and put up to a hundred and ten thousand for, um, the material line item and then up to fifty thousand because one of the invoices has already come in and it's below the amount that was requested.
So your motion is to transfer up to these amounts that are in the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Is that a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirk and all?
Cook.
Is that right? Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to make a correction to agenda item previously approved by Commission's Court on February the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five regarding purchase of three two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado fifteen-hundred crew cab PPV trucks from Lake Country Chevrolet in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. One of the vehicles delivered is a two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado fifteen-hundred crew cab pickup, VIN number ending in four eight five six. So the correction is a twenty-four year model to a twenty-five year model. That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fifteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Regina Bolton, Health Inspection Manager, to accept a donation from Blackfin Pipeline in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the annual Hardin County Courthouse Christmas tree lighting and credit to line item zero one zero three six seven one oh one donations courthouse tree lighting. That motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Mrs. Bolton shouldn't be here today, but she wanted to thank us for, uh, considering accepting this donation and she said it would definitely be put to good use for the Christmas tree event coming up. Any other discussion? We sure appreciate, uh, Blackfin helping us out there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, consider and possibly authorize request by the Honorable Chris Kirk and all, County Commissioner, to purchase a two thousand twenty-five Caterpillar motor grader, model number one four zero dash one five, ID number two five NE one two two zero for the RMB two department, and amend the fiscal year twenty-six RMB two budget as necessary. Purchasing price of the new motor grader is two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents after trade-in of a two thousand fourteen Caterpillar motor grader, model number twelve M three, serial number ending in zero two two four, in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars, realizing a cooperative purchasing agreement. Amount to be financed for a period not to exceed three years is sixty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents after down payment in the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand, which requires the following budget amendment. Transferring one hundred ninety-four thousand from the RMB fund balance into line item zero one seven six two two five seventy, equipment purchased for the same amount. As a note, Commissioner said these funds were underspent in the fiscal year twenty-five RMB two budget in hopes of funding this purchase in fiscal year twenty-six due to equipment availability and negotiating the best price for the trade-in. This amount includes the thirty-two thousand dollars that were remaining from the transfer, uh, transfer approved by Commission's Court on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five to pay off notes and purchase needed equipment. Commissioner Kirk and all?
Sure, uh, went back and forth with CAT and, uh, Kamatsu on trying to find a piece of equipment. Uh, when we got down to it, I thought I could get a, uh, PO to encumber the money. Neither one had a piece of equipment on site ready to be sold. And so, uh, I, I communicated with the judge probably the last two or three months of the budget year to let him know how frustrating it was and then we were able to get one from CAT and, uh, I on purpose held back money so I could try to cover the expenses of this. And so it's the pleasure of the court, I would move, uh, that we purchased this as stated.
That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Young. I would just add that I think you beat them up pretty good on the trade-in amount. Y'all really don't know. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Paul. Item seventeen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for National Resources Conservation Services Emergency Watershed Protection Program, project number NR two five seven four two XXXX, C zero zero nine, construction. Motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? One of them guys come back to work. I guess they're all, huh? Shut down? Hopefully they'll come back soon. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the County Judge to execute change order number six R one with Construction Managers of Southeast Texas LLC regarding courthouse and jail renovations. Mrs. Sims?
Good morning. Mr. Wall with LaBeach is here if you have any questions. This is, um, some metal plates to cover gaps in the jail, some ADA fixtures, and new tile on the restroom.
I just want to add, we've had several discussions with, uh, Clint and also with Mr. Wall about these covers. The sheriff has approved them, uh, basically with a new, uh, toilet that comes in. When it mounts up to the wall, there's a gap about like this and so this plate covers that gap. Aaron's been involved with them as well, so is the sheriff and Captain Dela Serta to make sure that when that's installed that it can't be removed or hopefully it can't be removed at all, but they use a special hardware. I think the cost come in somewhere around two hundred or two hundred and twenty dollars a piece. They think they'd get around thirty-seven of them. I asked them to go ahead and include up to forty in the change order to make sure if they add one or two more, we don't have to come back to court again. And they're going to bill us for only the amounts of the, of those plates that are installed. And then plus, like Misty said, there's also a different, a change in some tile somewhere. Any specific questions, Greg can answer those, but, uh, we have met about this numerous times and it's been beat up pretty good as well to make sure that we're not, uh, make sure that we're not paying any more than we should for this change order. What's the total amount it's going to be? Eleven, then seventy-eight, sixty-nine, is that correct? Greg, is that right?
For the, uh, for the metal plates over the toilets, that total, uh, was seven thousand, one forty-nine, seventy-nine, and that's based on forty units, so I don't think we're going to have, uh, forty. And the judge mentioned that it was been approved by the sheriff and Captain Dela Serta. We did a mock-up, we just didn't do a drawing. We, we mocked up one of the fixtures to let them actually look at it to make sure that it was, that it was good. Because the, the new toilet fixtures, the old ones, they don't make that model anymore. So when you start installing, there's a small, like a two to two and a half inch cap where the inmates could stash, do whatever, uh, back there. So we had to prevent that. And then for the switch, the, uh, one of the cells requires ADA fixtures. We, during our survey of the building, we couldn't get into that, uh, into that cell. I think they had an inmate that would let us in with, uh, so we had to switch that out for an ADA, uh, fixtures for the sink and shower.
And then that I read off is that amount?
Yeah, that was eleven thousand, nine seventy-eight. And then one of the, uh, restrooms up in the juvenile courtroom, we're going to make it look like the other ones. If you spin into the new restrooms, and that's a total of, uh, sixty-six hundred.
So the total is actually twenty-five thousand, seven sixty-five, forty-seven? That motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? This is all being paid for out of ARCA funds, is that correct?
Yes, we're still with it, good heavens.
And Commissioner Cook?
So the, the jail, this is a fixtures, uh, what, showers, lights, toilets? What all is this on the, the? On the fixture?
Toilet sink combination.
Huh?
Toilet sink combination. And showers.
Eleven thousand dollars.
That's, so that's the shower, that, that's the ADA shower, right?
And, uh, combination with the toilet.
It's not just one shower, right? All of them?
It's just in that cell.
Just one shower and one cell? Like when I said we beat them up pretty good, it was over the plates. These other items are fairly new that we haven't discussed that much, but these, uh, plates, we've talked about those at least three different times.
Yes, sir.
Uh, extensively. So let me correct that. Any other discussion? Greg, you feel like the, uh, amount on that, uh, that number two item that you brought up, it says CPR number eight, switch the standard jail fixtures and sell one thirty-seven to ADA fixtures? You feel like that's a, that price is good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just, just backup, Paul, as I can provide it, uh, Eric could share those fixtures, but we do have a backup.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number nineteen, consider and possibly authorize the County Judge to publish a public notice for solicitation of nominations for emergency services commissioners for each of the eight emergency services districts to serve for the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven term. I have a draft notice here, it's the same thing we put out last year, just has some different dates. It does give the public thirty days to submit nominations and gives the commissioners an extra week to review those before we make appointments at our first meeting in December. That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, setting a public hearing to receive comments from citizens of Hardin County concerning banning of all game rooms and gaming machines. Uh, this is a request by Sheriff Davis and, uh, Captain Custer that we have a public hearing. Uh, I think y'all probably seen in the news, Jefferson County and I believe maybe Jasper County has, uh, already acted on this. I think there's some new legislation that allows us to ban, uh, gaming machines and so, uh, it does require a public hearing and they ask us to go ahead and get that set. I've talked pretty good about it with Captain Custer, he thinks thirty minutes will be long enough. If y'all want to do it at nine-thirty before our next regular meeting on October twenty-eighth, if you want a little more time, you could do it at nine AM. It's whenever the pleasure of the court is.
I think nine-thirty's good.
Nine-thirty on October twenty-eighth, sounds good to everybody. Alright, we'll set that public hearing for nine-thirty AM on October the twenty-eighth. And Misty, does that give us time to get it in the paper? Alright. So is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Second, uh, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is set. Number twenty-one, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six County Park Preservation Fund to include a previously approved salary line item that was inadvertently omitted from the adopted budget as follows. Create, uh, new line item zero zero seven four oh three one oh five salaries assistance and fund that with three thousand dollars that will be moved from the fund zero zero seven fund balance, which is the preservation fund balance. Motion by Commissioner Kirk and all, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-two, a discussion on any other, a non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. We've got an email late yesterday, Commissioner Kirk and all and I did, regarding, uh, the work that has been done previously by the pipeline company. I don't see the email in here, it was supposed to be, is this part of the email, all of this?
Yes.
Alright, so I don't have the email to read to you, but it was forwarded to you late yesterday, I don't know if y'all read it. But basically, uh, Tex Dot has gotten with the pipeline company about some material that was installed that was not Tex Dot approved and this, uh, lieutenant asks us to consider doing the same on all counties right away. So why don't y'all look at that and, uh, or if you haven't looked at it, if you've already looked at it and you want to talk about it, we can do that. If not, y'all look at that and decide what you want to do. But the recommendation is to follow Tex Dot's, uh, decision, which is to make them replace that material with the correct material. I know what she's talking about?
Yes, sir.
Alex, are you aware of it?
I wasn't aware of that.
Some kind of mat, CD mat or something like that?
What they have is not biodegradable.
Correct. Right.
It's going to leak plastic and...
How in the world does she find out all this stuff?
Good question, I don't know.
I would have assumed that there was another agency that would be overlooking that, um, that they would have to use biodegradable, but I, I really don't know because we never had this issue.
Does any other, uh, commissioner have, uh, roads that they are still?
I had two that need to be repaired.
Well, you and I share that one, or you can't?
Outside of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so three.
Okay.
Thank everybody, but you don't have one, do you? All three of you do.
Yes.
Y'all want to just, uh, discuss and decide what to do about that or you want me to put it on the next agenda?
I reached out to Mike, we have played phone tag and I fully expect them to pay for the repairs and I don't know if... And I fully expect them to pay for the repairs, and I don't know if we need a public hearing for that.
I've got emails to back up the fact that they committed to overlaying the whole road for Chris and I that we shared, so...
I think they're going to do that, but this other item where they've used the wrong material, how do y'all want to handle that?
Ask them to change it and see if they comply.
I agree with that. I don't know. I would have to look into what kind of authority we have. We do permit pipelines, but we've never gotten into anything other than that.
That's true.
I would, I would think that the EPA or somebody else would have authority to...
Why don't we ask Alex to work with them on that? And then if there's an issue, we'll bring it back to court later. You want to do that? Does that sound good? As far as the overlays, I think they agreed to take care of those items. So gentlemen's agreement, to my knowledge, but like Donovan sent those emails to back it up. I think they'll take care of that.
I find Phil Mike to be a man of high integrity.
It's a good deal. So Alex, if you don't mind, would you reach out to them? I'll forward that to you if you don't have it already, and if you'll discuss that with them, and then if there's any kickback or issues, we'll bring it back on the future agenda and discuss it further. Does that sound good to y'all?
Yes.
Alright.
Well, we're still on...
Yes, sir, we're still on that item. Go get it.
A question I have, I know you sent out emails. How many employees do we have that's affected by grants on this show?
I know we have five in crime victims, one in the VA's office, and then it would be all the employees in the health department, to my knowledge. So that's probably somewhere around sixteen or seventeen.
So as we stand now, their pay has been reimbursed as we stand now?
Yes, sir, and we have a letter from DSHS that says they're guaranteeing that through the end of this month. What I intend to do is if there's still a question about it, at least we'll have a discussion item on October twenty-eighth agenda and possibly an action item. Still don't have the OOG grant approved for crime victims and the DA's victims coordinator. But I do get an email, I got one this morning, that says it's still in the pipeline to be reviewed, and that email doesn't say it should be approved, but I do have an email that says it's approved, just not yet awarded. Apparently the governor's executive team, the chief of staff and them, and I know Mrs. Holden's reached out to them as well to try to get this moved along. They're behind. It's never been passed or ended in the new fiscal year, but they have sent us an email that says once it approved, is, once it is approved, we'll be able to request reimbursement back October first. Which is how we do it anyway. We pay them upfront and then request reimbursement monthly. So they're still working on it, but they're not... And they're telling me that has nothing to do with the show.
If this is a long-grown-out deal, and if you put it on the agenda from the twenty-eighth, we can address it then, but we will have to make a determination whether or not we're going to continue that without knowledge of when we're going to get reimbursed, or...
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll have to determine that at that time.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that we get another letter from DSHS before the October twenty-eighth meeting that says they'll go ahead and fund us through November, and then that makes it easy on us. But if we have a letter that says they're not, then we've got a tough decision to make. But we always pay everybody upfront, and then we ask for reimbursement. Is it monthly or quarterly?
Monthly.
So we would be asking for reimbursement in November for October anyway.
Has a letter been requested to come for November?
Yeah, I told Sharon we would need an update by the end of the month, and I need to give her a firm deadline on that, and I will. Which would be the Monday before that meeting. Issue a burn ban this morning that's in effect for seven days. Commissioners have agreed to meet again next Tuesday at nine AM if we need to, if we need to continue that burn ban declaration, which I suspect we will. There's no significant rainfall inside, and it's going to take a few inches of rain countywide to get us out of the drought. So thank y'all for agreeing to meet next Tuesday morning. We'll do that at nine AM here. And I have put that out already. It's been sent to the news media, and it's also posted on social media, and it'll be on our website later today if it's not already, although Tony probably already has it on your posting, don't you, or do you? It will be. Alright. Does anybody else have anything?
I want to wish my wife a happy thirtieth anniversary.
Congratulations. Thirty years, that's a big deal.
I need to do something very special for her.
Announce all the records.
Protect it, someone.
Any other officials have any announcements or any discussion items you want to bring up? Anything?
Let me just... First of all, thank you all for what you do, and it's always good to be back home and listen to what's going on here locally. I want to say thank you publicly to our judge, Amanda. I know it's in your precinct with the issues going on with water out in Batson, Votaw and Thicket in that area, and other working. Thank you for working with us, and, well, let me just say that I'm glad to work with y'all to be able to facilitate anything we need from the state level, and we'll continue to do that going forward. Thank you for all that you do. Just want to say, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, you and your team have been a big help as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? No, we have motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.